Okay, all right, welcome everyone to the February 4 regular meeting of Village Council. We have already called the meeting to order and just came out of executive session. So next up are announcements, and I heard that Tim Baum was here to make an announcement, so I'll let you go first.
(laughing).
See?
Looks like he's got somewhere to be.
Right.
Now, I wanted to get ahead of everyone before people left.
Right.
Okay, can I stand on the other side? Uh, sure, yeah, you can, that, that mic comes out, just make sure to talk into the mic.
I still have to talk into it.
Yeah, so that our-
But not too close, or it'll boom. Look, look at you.
Yes.
Okay, so is everyone a bit aware of the utility roundup program? Maybe, maybe not, so we're finding that there is a little bit of confusion, so we're gonna tweak the way that we kind of put the information out. One of them, I'm coming here today just to talk to everyone. So when you see your bill, a lot of times if you see it online, it gets cut off about here, or maybe you just look for your number and move on. But this bottom portion, if you just sign it and check off one of these boxes, and just mail it in with your check, or put it in the drop box at any time, that's how you sign up for the program. What it is, is you round up your utility bill to the nearest dollar, whole dollar, and then a hundred percent of your money that's donated goes directly to people who apply to for help. So far, the community foundation gave us a big grant, helped get it started, and we've already had a couple people accepted for the applications. You have to do all this extra stuff because unlike other communities, we decided for an opt-in rather than an opt-out. So rather than just being forced to give money every month, we're giving you the option if you want to do it, so it takes a little extra paperwork.
Tim, Tim, could I, you might want to explain that you can sign up and still pay your bill online, you just have to sign up one time on paper.
Yeah, it's just a one-time, we need your signature to kind of say it's okay to take your money type of situation. So if you do automatic bill pay or whatever, you can print that out, and do this, if you do the mail every month, just cut this off and send it in. There are some extra ones out in the hallway for everyone, you have to put your address on this one, because this one's a blank one, but if you know anyone that wants one, this is really helpful.
And you can drop them in the box downstairs-
Yeah.
-in the wall next to the utility office.
Thank you.
He more.
All right, thanks to you.
No, I have a comment question, I guess.
Comment question.
You can also round up to the nearest five dollars or ten dollars.
Oh, yeah, I'm not trying to go for those, right? You can give a donation of anything that you want, there's a section for that, but round up to the next dollar would be awesome, more than that would be great.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Appreciate you.
I have a few other things to add, actually, can I say happy birthday to Johnny Burns?
Yeah, sure.
All right, so I know we're birthday buddies, Johnny's birthday is tomorrow, and I heard that it's Mike Neal's birthday as well, tomorrow, all right, so enjoy. Are you also joining the 50 Club? Wow, all right.
He's a real great beard.
Yeah, and I wanted to mention that our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, February 19th, because of the holiday on the 18th. And I wanted to give a shout out to the Euchre Tournament, happening this Saturday, to support the Y S schools. I'll definitely be there showing my support, and I would encourage everybody else.
At my desk.
All right. Any other announcements? All right, if not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from January 19th, which was our retreat, and the minutes from January 22nd, and I'd love to get a motion to approve.
I move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, next up is a review of the agenda, so anything we need to move, add?
Yeah, I had submitted a report on transient lodging, but it didn't get into the-
I had sent you an email to say it was moved to the next meeting, and we hadn't initially said it would be that meeting, and that it was not on the agenda, so-
Oh, okay.
That is where it is if you look on future agenda items.
All right. The other thing was, I was wondering if we might want to move special reports to before citizens' concerns, to let people who are making special reports leave early. We have some special reports, and I was suggesting we might want to move them ahead of citizens' concerns, so that staff people and other people giving the reports could leave early.
Okay, is everyone okay with that? All right, sure, then we'll do that. Anything else?
Yes, on the table, I submitted for our re-review, the document about the Yellow Springs Police Department organizational assessment, I would like some time to talk about that tonight.
Great, okay.
Full business?
You know, actually, I know it's unconventional, but I'd like to move it to right before citizen concerns, because I think it's relevant to what people might be commenting on.
Yeah.
Can I just say, if the goal is to get staff out of here early, Denise does have one item under new business that will take about five minutes, I don't know if you want to-
I was going to say, also Craig Doden is actually giving another report, so I don't know what he's going to be here.
Okay. We may have to wait on that part.
Okay, anything else? All right, then Mary Ann, petitions and communications.
Yes, we had a number of email letters that came in mostly at our last meeting, but because they didn't make that packet, they're in this packet, and they are from villagers in support of Dave Meister, and I'll read the names of those letter writers. Kate Anderson, Heidi Brown, Virginia Cottle, Eric Clark, Kay Curly, Dan Duffy, Linda Fisher, M.J. Gentili, Aaron Hanke, Vicki Hennessy, John Hudson, Peggy Coburnick, Leslie Lippert, Carlos Landaburo, Summer McGuire, Sharon Moller, Kate Mooneyham, Pan Rich, or Reich, he says, right, Laura Skidmore, Maxine Scuba, Thad Triplet, and then the village manager had an announcement about the utility roundup program.
Okay, and I think the highlight of that flyer is that if you would like to ask for funds from the utility roundup, you should do that by the 20th of each month, and I know we'll talk about some of the people that were able to keep the electric on because of the program, which is great. Okay, and I saw Carlos came up to sign up, if you do want to speak at citizens' concerns, it's always great to get you on the list, which is right in front of Caneta. So let's turn to public hearings and legislation, and first up, we have the second reading of ordinance 2019-03, and Judy, I think we can just do that by title only.
Sure, this is repealing section 290.01 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new section 290.01 court night.
All right, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, I move.
Second.
All right, Judy, are you explaining this one?
Yeah, and it's very simple to explain, for at least the last nine years, court has been held on Monday afternoons at 4:00 P.M., but in the codified ordinances, it states that it shall be held on Tuesdays at 7:00, and so this just corrects what has already been going on for many years.
Okay, any questions or comments? Citizens' questions or comments? All right, if not, Judy, if you could call the roll, please?
Indeed, McQueen.
Yes.
Sanford.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Hausch.
Yes. All right, and the other piece of legislation is resolution 2019-04. Judy, I think we can read that one in by title only as well.
Sure, this is authorizing the village manager to enter into an exclusive lease agreement with SBA Properties LLC.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I move.
Second.
All right, Patty?
As council knows, we were contacted by SBA Properties, who, they leased the property on which the cell tower at Sutton Farm sits. They wanted to provide a one-time lump sum payment to buy out that lease and make it a perpetual lease. Staff looked into it, did the calculations on the return that we currently get off of that lease, the $280,000 lump sum payment that they have offered, it would take us 15 years to recoup that. Now, do we all know 5G is coming? Yes, we're sure they have plans for that tower, we don't know exactly what they are, but staff's recommendation is that we accept this one-time lump sum payout. We have worked through the lease agreement that is attached with them, legal has approved it, and then that's pretty much it, with the one caveat that we did ask council to think about earmarking half of that to clean up the spoils pile at the farm that Johnny has been talking about, that we've allowed to grow over the past 10 years or 15 years that needs to be properly disposed of.
Okay, thanks Patty. Kevin, do you want to, I don't know if-
Did it get on, did we get copies of Thor's email that I?
No.
Yeah.
Kevin, do you want to just highlight what, we got a message from SpringsNet that I think is relevant to think about?
Yes, and we're gonna just babble until I can pull the email up, but I've been in conversations with a couple of members of SpringsNet, and, and they're effectively just encouraging us to tread carefully into the agreement, and it's not so much to, it's not a matter of protecting the village from, from losing any things, but just losing an opportunity to perhaps gain additional revenue. Because part of the argument is, there's only one provider, you know, on the tower now, but the expectation would be that situation would change rather rapidly, so I'm not going to be able to pull the email up quickly, but I think the gist of the things that they're saying is, it might be of more value than what is being considered right now.
Well, I actually had a similar conversation with Scott Fife this afternoon, and the, the company that holds the tower lease there is the only company that is not going to run fiber to, to disperse their 5G network. I, I understand where Scott and Thor are coming from, and I, they make a good point, I still am in favor of accepting the buyout.
So if we tabled this until our next meeting, would that, is that a problem?
I would have to ask them for another extension, and it could potentially change the amount of buyout, potentially.
Okay, the one thing I will highlight, that I highlighted at our last meeting, is that in the lease agreement, it does indicate that the municipality, Yellow Springs, can put things on that tower, and the mock lease that they gave us, which was for a municipality in Florida, also referenced that their county could do the same. So I, I like that piece of it, which I do think speaks to part of what SpringsNet was getting at, that we may have future initiatives where we would want to use part of that tower.
Right, and I did explain that to Scott when I spoke with him.
Okay.
So I guess my question is, if, if we were to table it, for what reason would we table it, what would we do in the intervening two weeks that-
My impression was that SpringsNet had not really looked at it carefully, they just found out about it, so part of what I got out of the email was a little bit more time to look at it, so, so anyway, I mean that's-
Yeah, and I don't suspect that we're talking about another two weeks, I don't know if there were any hard timeline, you know, that the company was, was up against.
Yeah, we've just asked them to extend it twice already.
Well, we are deliberate, and we want to get subject matter expertise, you know, involved in the conversation, doesn't mean anything would change on our end, but I think in terms of doing our due diligence, it would be worth it, I mean this, whether SpringsNet or anyone else, it's folks that we trust, that do have our best interests at heart, and relative to what this tower could procure in terms of revenue for the company, you know, the, the funds that they're offering us are really very small in comparison to what they could gain.
Oh, I agree, I agree with that.
So I'd be willing to just, just give us a little bit more time.
I had also raised the issue last time of, we have no control apparently over what they put on the tower, I didn't read, in fact, the onus is on us for not doing things, so, and I had asked, is there any, do we have any assurance that, that they're gonna put something that we're okay with, and I don't know what we wouldn't be okay with, but we don't know what's gonna happen five, 10 years, 50, 100, 200? So was any, is there any, do we have any, do we have any assurance that what's gonna be up there is gonna meet certain standards?
Well, it will be approved tele, telecommunications equipment approved by the FCC, I mean, other than that, I can't really give you any assurance as to what exactly it will be, because it will change over time, I'm sure.
Well, if no one else has an issue with it, I would propose that we table it at least to our next meeting, and we make sure we have a conversation with the SpringsNet folks in the meantime.
Will you put that in the form of a motion?
Aye, so move.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
I guess when you talk to SpringsNet, I'd like, we don't know what's gonna be happening, so at least if people who have some idea, looking into the future of what might be there, I'd like to know what their thoughts are about that.
Okay, all right, and I would like this to be on the agenda for the 19th. I, I don't anticipate that we need to delay beyond the next meeting, but, you know, I, I think the, the thoughts are good. Okay, so we said that we would move special reports up, so do we have someone here from the environmental commission?
Tom is coming.
Okay.
He's not here.
Johnny's here.
Johnny, Public Works, end of the year report?
It's been a busy year.
Yeah.
And we're only starting, and it's already been busy. So you've had a chance to look over it, I take it, and I guess what I want to make sure is, is if there's anything that you see that you want explanations for, or I can go through and highlight some areas that we have accomplished?
Yeah, I think highlights would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, most of these are issues we've definitely, you know, talked about, so-
The pool, I think talking about the pool, because that was a major effort, I think that-
The, we'll start with streets, we was able to get the sidewalks downtown ground down, and I think it has improved with the trip hazards. We've got the ADA handicap ramps down Dayton, West South College, they will be wrapping up as soon as they can finish the crosswalk, it's gotta be like 50 degrees to be able to put that material down on the ground. When we go into the Bryant Center, we was able to do the repaving of the Bryant Center, put in new curbs, along with paving Cory Street, Railroad Street, and West Limestone Street. At the same time of doing those, we added another catch basin on West Limestone, or East Limestone, right past the hotel to help slow the water down going into the yards over there. We replaced two catch basins in the Bryant Center parking lot that was in desperate need of it, they was failing fast, so we was able to get them in right before the paving.
Johnny, can-
Yes, ma'am.
So the catch basins go into the sanitary sewer line?
No, ma'am, they go to the creek, they actually catch the water for the storm and take it down to the local creek. We was able to paint a lot of the Bryant Center, we got the youth center done, we got the new floor in, the painting of it, we was able to make some changes in the gym, some carpet on the stairs and seats, tile on the back doors, was able to redo the back drywall and the back two entryways. We pretty much finished the police renovation downstairs, we removed a lot of old tile and put in carpet throughout, kind of deadened the sound, made a difference down there. And then we actually got this up here painted as well, on the second floor, you've probably noticed that we've already started for this year, and the Bryant Center downstairs is getting a little bit of TLC as well, different paint job going on down there, cleaning it up, making it look a lot nicer for the staff, the citizens, whoever comes to the Bryant Center, to let them know that we actually care about what we, where we work, and who we represent, so gym floor was done this year, kind of at the same time. The pool, tremendous job put forth by staff, council, local builders in town that jumped forward and took on the challenge of getting it up and ready and safely open for the season, had a tremendous year, got a lot of compliments on it. We did new diving boards, we got a lot of the side stones re-mortared in, we put a new pool roof on the chlorine house, we have restriped the bottom of the pool, we did a complete paint job on the entire pool, we took out some trip hazards by grinding them as well. We fixed a lot of holes around it, we have fixed a baby pool, it had a drainage issue, they was phoning it up daily, and this year, they's actually filled it up at the beginning and only put in water as it needed, it wanted to evaporate, and so it actually was working good, we put in a new exhaust fans for the staff to be able to suck out the chlorine fumes and all that from the pool, from the pool houses, and they're actually up there working now, they're actually finishing the rest of the project, we waited until the end of the season, but the main concession stand and the two locker rooms will have a matching metal roof as is the other pump house, so once we get done with that, I can say we come in under budget with the money that you allotted us, and we got a lot more done than what we anticipated. One thing that we did at Gaunt Park and Ellis Park, Subway, and the library, is we resealed the blacktop, cleaned it up, got the reseal on it, we restriped all those, I can't tell you the last time Gaunt Park was done, neither can half the staff that works here, so we did put two more handicap spots out at Gaunt Park, we are gonna put signage on there, to where people can park closer to the diamonds and closer to the pool. Ellis Park was done, Shook, as part of their water plant endeavors, they paid for a new shelter house out at Ellis Park, we actually helped them demo the old one to save on cost, and it is a very nice looking shelter house, we're gonna do some more improvements, maybe put a couple standing old barbecue grills out there, so people can go out there and enjoy that park, starting this coming spring. Gaunt Park, another thing that we did this year, which has helped some, but still in the process, is for the sled riding hill, we removed the electric poles that stood in the middle of the hill, so we put, put that wire in the ground, we also had dirt hauled in that was given to us, and we kind of leveled out to the bottom of the hill. Some people like that challenge to see if they can actually go past that, so they go and hit the fence, we did remove the hay bales, because what happened is, is the hay bales freeze, and we had a broken ankle from it last year when I hit that, the, the solid block of ice does not move, so if you're hitting the fence, if you go about 30 feet to the south, you will miss the fence, and you'll have a lot of outfield to go into. If you're gonna hit the fence, bail off. So one of the biggest jobs that we undertook this year was the stormwater at Kingsfield Court. Now, sometimes it was almost three foot deep in the roadway going into Kingsfield Court, we found out it was a Weepin Willow had been planted at the very beginning, when that plot was being built in the 90s, and we had to take down the Weepin Willow, we had to dig out 25 foot of 18-inch storm that was completely impacted by the root ball, so you imagine roots, now we, staff and I worked on it for over a week trying to grind out roots, we actually got up 15 foot, but the other 25 foot was too impacted, and majors come in and helped us with that, did a fabulous job, they had never seen such a root size, I mean, it didn't even come out of the concrete, concrete and all come out when they pulled the root out. So we've had some major rainfall since then, and it's dry as it was when it was put in brand-new in the 1990s. On the same time that frame, or the same timeframe, we actually did Wright Street, Wright Street was flooding at the same time, we found out that somebody that put a waterline into their house actually trashed through the storm drain, covered it back up, collapsed it, and it had not been caught, so we was actually able to camera that line, find where that was, dig 35 feet of that up, placed it back, and we've not had a problem on Wright Street. These are just little things that we're trying to do as we have time, thanks to Green County and Fairborn, they have actually come in, we do not own a camera, so Fairborn and Green County have graciously come out here many times to stick a camera in there, crawl it up the line, tell us where our problem is, and then we go in and fix it, so, and that's kind of like Brian and I have been talking about for a couple, two or three years, is collective working between each other, counties and cities and all that, we, we're too small and they're too large, and we can help each other, so, again, I think, I mean, we found a manhole by Fairborn coming out and sticking it down there, finding a manhole, it saved us about $80,000, so. Sanitary sewer, Vectren did a job over here, right on Walnut and North Winter, and they did a job, and what they did is they come in for their job, and they actually camered about 9,000 feet of line, sanitary line, so they knew exactly where it all ran, they marked it all on the streets. What that did for us is we know what the inside of our pipes look like, so we was able to contact Dukes, which is a foam agent, a company that puts in foam to kill the roots inside there, and we was able to foam about 15,000 foot of line this year, we've foamed North Winter, North Stafford, King Street, all that area over there, and then we actually did Herman Street from Ziny Avenue all the way to Cory, and preparations that this coming year, we can actually get those all slip lined for the new lining program. On the, on the plus side, Vectren's coming in doing more work next year, so, and that project that they did this year is about maybe a fifth of the size of the one they're doing next year, they're doing, I think, 10 projects in total next year in the Village of Yellow Springs, so we're gonna fall right behind them again, have root control come in, and then we will be able to know what the inside looks like, and then put those on the slip line at the same time. The water plant was up and running, they got it pretty much under control, Brad's actually got full staff, we actually, the last new person started with him today, so he is getting them trained up and ready to go, and they are handling the wastewater and water treatment plant and the list station, he got some much-needed concrete work that the groundhogs are making changes with, and so we kind of gave them a new home by putting more concrete down there, so the, when Daytona underneath of it, it just falls and breaks, and, and so we had to get in there and jack it back up and put new concrete back in there. So Brad does have some needs coming this year, but we've got them on the budget, and we'll get some things taken care of, we've got some maintenance things to do for him. Electric poles, staff changed about 25 roughly by theirself, we had about 10 to 13 of them changed by a contractor, so total for the year, we're probably at about 45 poles being changed out either by accident or storms, or new by contractors coming in. Staff also this year completed the Cresco facility, that was 100% done by staff, putting power back here with aid to construction, took the electric- Took the electric staff and good street crew to pull in all the wire, but we got it done. And I can still hold my word that we was not the ones holding them up. So, they said that it was always the utilities. We made sure it was not the utilities that was holding them up. So...
And I think it's important to note that aid to construction is something that they reimburse the village for.
Actually, they paid in advance before we did the work.
Even better.
Staff also installed two new Tesla chargers out there this year. We got them signed up and lettered and noted on the ground. Tree trimming was done by Graze this year. We only have one section. We're waiting on some more frozen ground where we can get in there. But Graze did a great job as well. We was actually working on the area that the ice storm hit and we had the most trouble with. And it was scheduled to be done on Wednesday, the following week, and the ice storm come in and helped them out. So, we got some of that work caught up and we're waiting on some more frozen ground. Water, that was probably our biggest accomplishment this year that we actually turned about seventy valves on the south end of town. We broke about fourteen of them. We actually had to replace three of them, but we got the valve exercising started. We was getting ready to do a flush and then found out that we were still missing some valves in the system and we have located those. We actually had two valves in the system that were closed that nobody knew about. So, we got them open. So, we are, we are working with the EPA to get it back on schedule for early spring to where we can get a flushing, unidirectional flushing started and get some of this iron and manganese out of the pipes. We had about six main breaks last year. We're at three this year. So, it's not good. They just did one on Shawnee Trail today. They did one on Glenview on Friday night. So, the warm and cold weathers do not help the water lines. It's not the water line freezing. It's the ground shifting from thawing and freezing, thawing and freezing. And it really depends on the backfill that they used and seeing as how we're sitting on limestone, that don't help. So, the other thing that I want to highlight before I get done is, is the GIS system. We are working with LJB. We had a meeting scheduled. We had a waterline break, so we re-scoated it. We got half of it done. But the GIS system is going to be up and running here in probably a month. We got a lot of data to collect and we're looking forward to it. We're trying to get it also to where the electric system can be on that to where we can highlight an area and we'll do a, like a one call system to the local affected area people saying that there's a power outage and the crews are doing that way. The five hundred phone calls, the dispatch can be slowed down. Dispatch can actually dispatch us and get some things done. So, we're trying to get a little bit ahead of the game. It happened when the storm come through. Actually, one of the officers put out a one call, slowed down the call. So, we think it'd be a good thing once we get the GIS system up that we'll be able to handle that and make a positive thing.
Excellent.
We're going twenty nineteen.
Yeah, questions? All right, excellent work. Thank you, Johnny. Thanks to the team. All right, Colleen.
Throw a bunch of initials out there. That's what Johnny did. It works.
I'm just going to highlight this first page. It's up on the board. Everything else is detailed that gives all the breakdown of the front sheet. So, for the last year in review, the very top of the page on the left side is what I listed our estimated revenues. And that was what the budget was estimated to bring in. And that was seventeen million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. And then at the top on the right is the budget and which is our expenditures for approval. And it started out at ten million, five hundred forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Then there were four supplementals during the course of two thousand and eighteen. Brought the total budget up by the end of the year at eighteen, I said thousand, eighteen million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and nineteen cents. So, those were our budgets, our estimated revenue and our allotted expenditures. The next section is our actuals. Go ahead.
I don't, where did that six million come in from, on the fourth quarter? I don't remember about that.
On the revenue side or the?
Well...
The supplemental.
The supplemental, okay. The fourth quarter, we were, we have to book basically. We had to put in the numbers at OWDA for the water treatment plant loan. So, we put it in on the revenue side as revenue from the loan from the grant, OWDA. And then it's also an expenditure because we paid our vendors. So, that was a posting in and out. So, the next section is your actuals. So, and every month, January, February through December is your, our actual revenue that we receive every month and then the actual expenditures. So, this tells you what we expected to get in with our estimated revenue and what we actually received. We received eighteen million, three hundred twenty-two thousand, six hundred and five dollars. So, we received more than what we estimated, which is always good. And then on the budget side with our appropriations being approved for the eighteen million, three hundred sixty-two thousand, that first section, our actuals were, that we spent were seventeen million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So, we stayed underneath our appropriations. So, if you look at our actual revenue and our actual expenditures, we had a balanced budget. We, in actuals, we ended up spending less than we received. So, that's always good and we worked hard for that. Next section is your statement of cash. That's your actual fund balances. It's like your actual checkbook. And we started at the beginning of the year at seven million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars. And we ended at the end of the year, holding out some encumbrances. Those are holding out purchasers. We haven't actually spent. But with that being subtracted, we still ended our bank balances at eight million, five hundred forty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars. So, again, we're watching our fund balances very closely and making sure that we're not depleting them. And then the bottom is your bank reconciliations. So, this one sheet covers pretty much everything I could think of that would be easy to read, easy to pass out, easy to understand. And then the rest is all the detail for where the revenue numbers came in and where all the expenditures were. And that's my report for the year. If there's any questions, I can entertain.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is very nice to see a balanced budget. And, you know, I think also we appreciate how much staff is looking at those numbers and making sure that we stay in the black. So, great job.
I would like to use this format, and I'll talk with our city manager Patty, to keep it updated monthly that she'll be able to put in her monthly reports for you. And then when I do my quarterly, I'll have all the detail attached every quarter. And maybe that will help keep it, keep everything updated.
Great. Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. Okay, I thought I saw Tom come in.
Tom is there.
Hey, all right. Let's hear what the, actually very impressive report from the Environmental Commission.
Thank you, thank you. So, Tom Dietrich, Environmental Commission member. And thanks for letting me share a few of the highlights from last year. We did a new process of developing our environmental goals. Trying to prioritize over all of the potential things that we could put our energy into. So, you can see that on page, I guess page three it starts. If you had a chance to look at that, it just summarizes what we did, how we did it and what we came up with. And, you know, trying to look at what was the, what are the most important things to the village? And what are those positive states that we want to achieve? And trying to frame it in a, in that light and then head toward that as a goal rather than trying to fight against sometimes environmental issues or, you know, you're fighting against something. But we're trying to create a positive future state. So, there's nine of those, which I won't read to you since you've got it in front of you. So, we'll go ahead and just give some of the highlights from a few of those. So, we weren't able to tackle all nine of them, but we have started on five of those objectives. And the first one, natural ecosystems are thriving. Did a lot on the glass farm. We wrapped up the grant project. And the thing I want to highlight here was the great relationship that the village and Kums Land Trust and the volunteers from the community have come together to make this happen. So, you know, not only the, you know, you all, the council, but also village staff, you know, came out and like John just mentioned, installed a bunch of signs out there and did some mowing. And the volunteers were out and did a bunch of honeysuckle removal. And of course, Land Trust is overseeing the whole thing. So, that's a nice collaboration. And that will continue even though the grant's done, you know, that collaboration will continue. The next objective, water is clean, groundwater, surface water, storm water. As you know, we've been advising on the Vernay situation and trying to, you know, stay abreast of the remediation planning. No news on that at this point. I don't know where that stands because of the shutdown. I think we, they have a big backlog and we haven't heard back from them right now. But I know Patty Bates has been, has reached out to US EPA to try to get status on that. We developed and distributed that stormwater brochure, so educational brochure to the community and the source water protection plan. Pretty excited about that, although there is still some more work to do on that. According to EPA, Ohio EPA, they've requested some changes to that. So, we will be working on that this year. Manage landscapes and build environment are healthy. We're continuing the effort to reduce or educate about, to help reduce the use of pesticides. And some really nice presentations, well-attended and really interesting stuff on pollinator regeneration as well as reducing use of pesticides. And, let's see, business and residential waste is minimized. This has been a hard one to make progress on, but we're continuing to do research and collaborate to try to identify some opportunities for increasing recycling. And one potential that we're going to explore the feasibility is on expanding, providing the opportunity for apartment buildings. Some, you know, larger apartment complexes don't, apartment complexes don't have that option for their residents.
So, Tom, related to recycling, are you guys also looking at the schools?
We have not. That's an opportunity.
Yes, it's a huge opportunity. We happened to notice that when we had the speech and debate tournament that all these water bottles were going into the landfill.
Okay.
So...
And that could list.
Yeah, that's another good opportunity. Yeah. And with, I think this information from the, you know, we're trying to, our current contract doesn't provide or doesn't force the haulers to go to the apartment building. So, we're looking for an alternative and that alternative could maybe apply to the schools as well. So, good thought. And then the climate, climate is stable and village is resilient with the sustainable carbon footprint. As you know, you all passed the resolution earlier this year supporting climate action priorities. So, we, that kind of ends on a note that I didn't want to just mention that if anyone's out there listening and interested, we are looking for another commission member. So, we've had a little bit of turnover. We've had some new members and a couple have stepped down. So, there isn't, at least is there?
We actually have one person that I forgot I'd like to approve tonight. But, and another one, we still have to interview. So, we have two people stepping up.
So, that'll help because there's, as you can see, there's a lot of work to do. And I hope that you all will look at these, the goals that we have here. We're going to have a retreat and update these goals this year. We look forward to your input because we're trying to serve your interests and the interests of the village. So, you know, look forward to this continued collaboration and providing you useful tools.
Well, I want to say I really like this structure of identifying barriers and associated strategies. I did want to mention with air is clean, number four. I didn't see, it says strategies none proposed. I wanted to make sure that you guys were thinking about the active transportation plan, right? So, we just finalized that. That's huge.
Yeah.
And if we can have EC thinking about this, you know, in addition to thinking about it from the transportation end and what Johnny's doing with infrastructure, that would be huge.
Absolutely. Transportation is one of the big opportunities. So, thank you.
I also wanted to comment on number six, the one that relates to businesses prioritizing sustainability and are aware of opportunities to cooperate with other businesses. I strongly agree with the barrier of lack of networking. And for me, this year in the commissions that I'm a part of, so that's economic sustainability and art and culture, I'm charting a course that's centered on collaboration. And we just had our ESC retreat, you know, the other night and spent the majority of the time trying to think about kind of a network connector map of everyone that's trying to achieve certain adjacent missions to economic sustainability. You know, I think that art and culture plugs into that. I think environmental work plugs into that. And when I think about the work that the council can do, I mean, if we, if all we're able to do is understand a network map of everyone who's trying to do certain things and connect them together, I think we would be doing something amazing.
Yes.
So, it would be nice to have maybe some cross pollination, to use an environmental term, between what you're thinking about in terms of improving networking opportunities with businesses.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and mention, you know, number five, citizenry has access to local sourced organic food. You know, in our positions, we do tend to get involved with, you know, various conversations, you know, across the board. And so, I do know that, you know, that there is a local food initiative. But I don't know, for the meetings that I've attended, that there's been any discussion about involving the Environmental Commission. And so, you guys, I think, would be a resource for those folks and I think you'd be a good source of information as well.
Great.
Try to work to make sure that connection happens.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Well, anything else? Excellent work. Really appreciate everything the Environmental Commission is doing and also that you guys are really adding capacity. Because that's been a big issue for council is that we need commissions that can help do this work and you guys are doing awesome.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, thanks, Tom. Okay, and then Denise, I guess we're... You're going to wait for Frank?
Yeah, and if he doesn't make it, then I'm on the agenda anyway later.
Okay, good. Then we will move to citizen concerns. And if you guys don't mind passing that list down. I just want to say a few things before we begin citizen concerns. And one of those is going to be handing the mic over to Lisa. So, I am going to be absolutely strict about clapping. Besides some of the comments that were made last time about how it impedes people's ability to express their concerns because it becomes a popularity contest. I was very concerned when I got contacted by several people who cannot hear the meetings because of the clapping. And so, I put the gavel up here. I don't want to have to use it, but I would like us to just be respectful. We love having citizen input. It's very important. But the clapping and snapping and whatever, I'm just going to ask that you don't do it. And if that does happen, then I'm not sure what we're going to do.
I'd like to tag on to that because I sort of mentioned it at the last meeting. A couple of us have also heard from people who attended the last meeting who felt pretty intimidated by that and did not say anything because they had a different point of view. So, that's, that's, that's a, that is the main reason that I am really concerned about the clapping. clapping because it really can intimidate people who feel differently. And it's important that we're, that everyone, even if they're a minority, gets to have a chance to talk. So, thanks.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Also, I didn't really feel it was appropriate at the last meeting because emotions were running high. And I mean, the issue that I'm expecting most people want to talk about is, is a tough one for everybody, whether, you know, everyone believes that or not. It's something that, you know, when Kate Mooneyham said that she hopes we don't sleep well at night, well, guess what? We don't. We're thinking about this a lot. But I do want to make a couple of clarifications because there have been a few facts that I think are important and they may help frame people's comments. One of them is, Patty, can you just clarify Officer Raful's background? Because there's been some, you know, there's just been some lack of clarity about what his experience is as an officer.
Yes. Officer Raful has been an officer, and they call them officers, with Summit Behavioral Health. He was not a road patrol officer in any capacity prior to coming to the Village of Yellow Springs. So he has been here for, I guess, nine to 10 months now. And that is his only road patrol experience. Prior to that, again, he was at Summit Behavioral Health, which means he is in the, inside the mental health hospital, helping to control the clients and, you know, make sure that everyone receives proper treatment, that kind of thing.
Okay. Thanks, Patty. And this becomes important to us because a, a main issue and why, you know, Lisa and I spoke to the YSO News was this issue about securing the scene. Not about how many people ended up being there once the scene was secured, but the scene being secured itself. The other thing that I think has become a little bit unclear is this policy 342. There's been a lot of, it was in the paper, which by the way, I thought, Megan, you did a great job with the article. It was very balanced and informative. And so I have this in front of me because there's been some cherry picking of the policy and I want it to be really clear what this policy says. So I'm just going to read a couple things. One of them, and this was quoted, but I, I think people are misunderstanding the words here, officers generally should not initiate law enforcement action while off duty. And I think it's very important to focus on the word initiate because there was no, the issue that we are talking about was already initiated, all right, when the call came in. And then it goes on to say, officers are not expected to place themselves in unreasonable peril. However, any sworn member of this department who becomes aware of an incident or circumstance that he or she reasonably believes poses an imminent threat of seriously, serious bodily injury or death or significant property damage may take reasonable action to minimize the threat. And given that we are a safe community and that shots are not fired very often, I think this applies very clearly to this situation. So we may have different interpretations about damned if you do, damned if you don't, and we might get into that later. But the reality is using this policy to say that that defends not taking action when shots were fired, I think is a misapplication. So then the last thing before we move to citizen concerns, I want Lisa to just briefly talk about her proposal. And it relates to, one of the things we put in the packet was a section of the charter, I believe it's section 17, which outlines the duties of council. I thought Laura Kerlis actually did a great job in her letter of trying to identify the delineation between administration and council in a council manager form of government. But one of the things that was highlighted in that, and actually Megan highlighted it to me, is that it is definitely within our purview to investigate or assess our departments to improve them. So with that, Lisa?
Sure. So something came in late to the packet. It was a return of, of a document originally submitted on November 15, 2018 by me and Mary Ann McLean that was part of the budget process as a request for budget to complete an organizational assessment of the police department in Yellow Springs. At that time, I felt support from council, but also a sense of reticence that maybe, you know, it wasn't quite time. We needed to get the justice commission going first. And my point at that time was, okay, but let's have the budget. Because then if we need it, it's there. And, you know, as, as Brian said, yeah, we're, you know, we're not sleeping at night. This is a very significant disruption and crisis in our community that I argue goes beyond any individual or group individuals and points to a more deep-seated systemic issue that the council has the responsibility to investigate. And I think because of the nature of police work, as a healthcare professional, it's sort of the same thing. You need to have people who have deep expertise in a particular field to really evaluate budgets, processes, policies, skill sets, what I would call as a nurse, a head-to-toe assessment of really what's going on. And so tonight, I'm asking my fellow council members to say, this has to become a priority. This has to be something that we set in front of even some of the formation of the justice commission because any findings from this would inform our work. I think we have to do this and I have to, we have to do this right now. I think it's the top priority in our community. We have a horrible breakdown in trust between the community and the police and the council and our staff and we have to go after this. So I want to do this and work with Mary Ann to find the right professional and move forward quickly.
I'd like to, to echo that. You know, I didn't come on council to be an expert in police procedure or police policy or police training. It's not what I wanted to do. But as I've been thinking about this and losing sleep this week and last week, I have decided that the role of village government is to provide essential services. I mean, that is the primary role. And policing is certainly an essential service. And because there is a power dynamic in policing, it really rises to the top. There've been a number of citizens who have suggested that there has, is a vendetta going on. I do not believe that is the case and I have not found any evidence to that. At the same time, I've also learned over the years that whether or not something is actually happening, whether it's true, if that's the perception, it almost doesn't make the difference. And we have a president of this country who is demonstrating that. If something's said long enough, people will believe it. So we have a problem in our community, at least with a very vocal segment of the community, as Lisa said, a breakdown of trust. And I think it is imperative, given the power that the police have, that we have a police department that is trusted by the community. And none of us, and frankly, I don't know, I mean, maybe some of you are experts, but I haven't. I don't think that's the case, that we really need to have this looked at so that it works for our officers and for our staff and for all of you and for all of us. So I think we're just putting that out now and we will be continuing to figure out how we're going to move this forward. But to try and move the justice, to focus on the, to continue having meetings about this and this and this when this thing, the elephant is in the room, is we have to address the elephant in the room.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Okay. So with that, I'm going to start with who I've got on the list and then we'll go from there. And Richard Lapides. Okay. Nancy Lewis?
Well, of course, this does have to do with Officer Meister. But sort of, I'm asked for the organizational chart. And it sort of surprised me that the chief of police reports to the village manager, whom I don't think, like you said, is an expert in policing.
She is, actually.
And the village manager reporting to the village council. I was also told that the village manager should not initiate any investigations into the police department unless specifically requested to do so by the chief of police, is what I was told. And that the village manager cannot initiate this outside investigation without the approval of the village council to whom she reports. So my question is, was this put to each and every member of the village council? And did you, and you report to us as the citizens, did you approve this outside investigation? Did you, Mr. House?
I.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure where you got your information, but that's, well, the organizational chart, yes. But as far as my ability, as far as my ability to initiate investigations, I do have that ability. And I do not require council approval to do that. So I'm not sure where you got your information.
Okay.
I mean, Chris can speak to that further if.
I'd have to look at the handbook for that.
With the, the, under the charter, the discipline of any employee is my purview. It actually does not fall to council. And I.
What do you answer to council?
I do. But as far as initiating discipline, that is well within my responsibilities.
So if you report to council, does then the council approve of this action? And if not, then their disciplinary action should be with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I'm asking each member of the council if they did approve.
I think that anytime it appears that an officer or a staff member has gone against what they're supposed to do, that, that should be looked into and investigated, yes.
So you were given the details and knowing what you know?
I'm not going to go into things that happened in executive session. But as I said, an employee, there's, there are codes of conduct. And if someone breaches that, then there, then that should be looked into. Yeah, sure.
Everything that was reported does not show breach of any kind of code of conduct. I don't understand where that came from.
The purpose of this is not to engage in a dialogue back and forth for you to say what you.
All right. I just think that as the most trusted and respected officer on our force, that maybe that's why he's being targeted. Maybe others on the force feel threatened by him because he is the best officer we have.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy. Troy Gard? Oh, that was for speaking. Hey, no problem. All right. Carlos?
Carlo Ladaburu, two short comments on two issues. About Officer Meister, it would be nice, I mean, we have heard many testimonials supporting his service. We have seen many letters of support. It would be nice if this information makes it to his, makes its way to his personnel file so that he can be there. The other issue is the proposed lease buyout. Wireless is going to be huge in the near future. And I am concerned that if this piece of land is in private hands, a company can decide to set up a regional hub and we may find ourselves, the whole village, just very close to the source, kind of having like a leaking microwave. And that makes me really concerned. If it is, if it is the property of the village, the village has a lot of say of what is going on there. It is totally private. We have no control. Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
Just to that last one, just real quick. Carlos, as far as what they put on that tower right now, we would have the, the same amount of say as what they would put on if it were a perpetual lease. That part doesn't change. They have the right to put on their tower what they want under, under the current lease.
We don't have any veto power on the power of equipment. Then I may not sleep very well tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Carlos. Were there any other citizen concerns? Okay. All right. Can you come back to the mic just so they can hear on the?
Could I ask then that that be checked for clarification if, in truth, if the village manager is supposed to have the approval of council before involving an outside investigation?
Yeah, we can actually, some of the things in the charter speak to that. But we'll, we'll put together a one-pager that clarifies that language and have that for the next packet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
Do you want to go ahead with the PUD?
I guess so. So are, do you want to go ahead and do the PUD at this point, Denise?
I do want to mention the letter that you should be at your table this evening. You have that letter from, yes, that this is not the fault of the applicants. It was sent to my former YSO.com email where it was treated as junk mail. And being out last week, it disabled the attachments and I didn't realize that until today when I followed up. So I apologize for that. Jessica Yamamoto and Antonio Molina, Jessica is here tonight with architect Ted Donnell, are requesting council's approval to allow the planning commission to consider the rezoning from I-1 industrial mixed use to a PUD planned unit development on their property Millworks, which is less than five acres. It's actually 3.997. As I mentioned in my report, your approval tonight is not for the redevelopment itself, but just to ensure that the putt application would not be denied because of its size. The reason they would like to rezone to PUD is because the existing designation as I-1 does not allow for the mix of uses that they're interested in having, particularly on the one acre lot, which you saw in your packet, the artist studios with residential lofts above and a hostel. The owners want to expand the uses into a unified complex with businesses that are complementary to one another. And this would not be possible under the existing I-1 zoning. And so staff is recommending approval of their request to go through the PUD process of rezoning with the planning commission. Any questions?
Well, I presume that the new owners will have total responsibility for everything that happens on the property such that changing the zoning from I-1 wouldn't preclude any future small manufacturing.
Well, right. I mean, that's, they, they're going to have to make sure that when they come with a preliminary plan, that they put all the, all those things into the, into their application and it'll be looked at collectively. One of the things in the, in the PUD purpose is to have a mix of uses and they definitely have that right now. Pretty much most of the things that they have or want to do would be allowed in the I-1, but not residential. They could do, they could still do the greenhouse, test kitchen, those kinds of things, but they can't do the artist studios and residential.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, I think this project is really exciting. I love what's been proposed. One thing I want to throw out there is I want to make sure that access to the Little Miami Scenic Trail is looked at. I know that we have some stormwater issues, but I wonder, you know, if there would be a way to have a couple connections, maybe something that comes over, whatever you call the, the block there that protects, you know, the trail. But it would just be nice for people to, you know, be able to hop right in and out onto the bike trail. But it would just be nice for people to, you know, be able to hop right in and out onto the bike trail, so...
And one of the things in their proposal that it also is gonna help, hopefully it might mitigate some of the traffic issues, because not only, right now, it's just North Walnut as the ingress and egress for that property. There is actually a, a way to get in off of Fairfield Pike, but nobody really realizes that, and it's just a gravel dirt road, it's not something you would notice. With this complete revamping of the property, as well as repaving, actually paving the, the parking lot, they're going to have a visible second entrance and exit.
Excellent, cool.
But we'll definitely make sure that's a part of it.
Good, and then also, I, I love that the Science Castle may happen as well, so that was a cool little piece of that.
Some pretty exciting things.
So, yeah.
And just to turn, swing back around to something I said earlier about the local food initiative. I mean, I was sort of excited about the test kitchen, and it, you know, with respect to the conversation earlier about collaboration and really hooking up different pieces of the community, sounds like this proposal really does a good job in bringing a lot of varied interests together.
Yeah, they bring a lot of new ideas, fresh ideas, they got a lot of energy for it. So I'm going to be meeting with them tomorrow, along with the planning commission, for a working session to review what we have so far, and then see if there's anything else we need for the preliminary application. You would not be getting that application till March, probably your first meeting in March.
Uh, any other questions or comments?
I support it.
Okay, so then, do we take a formal vote?
A motion to allow them to proceed would be useful, that we've got it clear.
I move that we allow them to proceed with the planning as, for a potential PUD.
A second.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No.
You were good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, thanks Denise, thank you. All right.
Do they wanna, does the attorney or property owner wanna say anything?
My name is Jessica Yamamoto. Thank you for approving Millworks to move forward on the, on the zoning, or to go before zoning next week. We're looking forward to opening up those corridors and, and bringing the bike path into the Millworks property. And, and hopefully there'll be more flow, more parking. Also, more integration and supplement to the downtown area, so, yeah.
Thanks, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are going to go to old business then, so...
Do you want?
Are you gonna do, are you doing, are you gonna do it for friends?
I sent him an email, but I don't know, it's okay.
Okay, so planning and zoning, end of the year report.
So, right, just as a quick overview, you know, we also were very busy in the planning and zoning office, our staff of one, but we do actually now have a part-time, part-time, part-time person. One and a quarter, there you go, to help out. We, highlights of 2018, we, you know, council approved our pocket neighborhood development legislation, which was added to the zoning code. We also had another 21 text amendments that are going to help with infill, which was a part of the, not only the vision plan, but the comprehensive plan. Staff really takes a lot of effort into making sure when we do get things that come before a desk, that we, that we always take into consideration, that comprehensive plan, as well as that vision plan. Now, the vision plan was done in 2010, it's not scheduled to be done again until 2020, but the, but the comprehensive plan should be done every five years. That was also done in 2010. So as you know, planning commission started on it, we kind of got stalled with all these projects that had been going on. So we really want to bring that back to the table. We're gonna have a goal session tomorrow from one to four here. And in that session, we're hoping to, you know, try to set up what our timeline's gonna be for getting this comprehensive plan back on the table. We had a 47% increase in permits in 2018. Quite a number of those were due to the new transit guest lodging, but even if you back that out, we still were at a 17, 18% increase. We had used Wright State University intern in the spring of 2018. We did not get a call, I don't know why, but we did not get a call from Wright State to have an intern for this spring. So that's sad. Let's see, we also held nine conditional use hearings, had a number, several solar interconnection agreements that were done and approved by Public Works. We never, didn't have to have the border zoning appeals meet at all in 2018. And I think that really was a direct result of tightening up the text amendments in the code and making things a little clearer to understand, it's not so subjective. And then, as I said, the transit guest lodging started in January, and we've had, when I wrote this, I think it was 32 permits, it might be 33 now. And several new business, businesses received zoning permits in 2018. One is already open, Therapy Counseling Service, one down, two downtown. One is scheduled to open in March, and the other one, I'm not really sure when they will be open. Let's see, we also issued 56 violations. Most of those were related to vegetation in the right-of-way, which usually happens between about June and September. And then we had a number of meetings with people, architects, businesses, residents, schools, surveyors, totaling about 63 meetings, and those are ones that were actually, appointments were set. It's just not possible to track those that come into the office or call on the phone. Just have not been able to track that. So I'm sure it was three times that number. And that's about it.
All right, well, thank you Denise, yeah, great work, and I also appreciate your support of the act of transportation planning process.
We do incorporate that as well, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so I think we will now move back to old business. And first item we have are the 2019 council goals. Okay. So, I think at this point, I'm not sure we have a lot to drill down on with the goals. I know that pretty much everybody has contributed their ideas, so... Does council have any things that they wanna highlight?
I had two things.
Okay.
One is, I just was getting lost of where we're going to, we have the community health assessment, so do we need to call out culture of health, or do we wanna just say the community health assessment, just because the culture of health is a, kind of a grant in its own thing?
Well, so it's, it's under, for the first goal, for future ongoing, um...
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, there it is, okay, thank you. Then the other thing was, at the ESC retreat, the ESC was asking if there, there was enough emphasis on the DCIC. I mean, it said, the verb is utilize, which implies that it already exists, and we have a lot of work to do. So we could, we could leave it at utilize with the understanding that means that we've gotta get it before we can utilize it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so were you thinking that we should add something else, or...
Well, I don't know, I just wanna point out that it's a, it's a significant amount of action to, to launch it. I mean, we could always do an "and" statement, even though that's, you could say, launch.
So you're thinking about, under the economic sustainability goal?
I'm actually looking at the first one as well, where it says, utilize YS Designated Community Improvement Corporation to promote affordability goals.
So maybe what we need to do is, under the economic sustainability goal, highlight the launch?
Yeah, that'd be good, just because it's such a, it's a lot of work.
Yep. All right, I think that's a good addition.
That's all I had.
Okay. Any other comments about the goals?
Staff was asked to look through the goals and see if anything might potentially need to be pushed back. And the only one that we had any real concerns about was, was the completion of the review of the comprehensive plan, because that is such an in-depth, an in-depth document, and it's gonna take a while to go and do a complete review.
Okay.
So is it possible that it would be finished in 2019? Yes, but I would be more comfortable if it would be continued to 2020.
Which goal is that?
It's actually mentioned in several different ones. It's in the engage in continuous infrastructure development, which is the third goal. It is then...
Adopt, that's where it says adopt updated.
Yeah.
So we could move that to future?
Yeah, and it's, it, it is mentioned a couple times throughout the goals, I can't, I'm looking for the other. But it's also under the...
Yeah, it's under the second goal, complete updated comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and it's under the execute economic sustainability strategy, update comprehensive land use plan is in there. So it's just, I'm just concerned that, because it's such a voluminous document, that it might take a little bit longer to, to get that through.
Okay. I think that's a good recommendation. Did you have something, Mary Ann?
No, but what I would like is to, when we, is this gonna be the final with whatever you put in as tweaks?
So...
Final in this working document?
Well, except the one thing I did wanna talk about is that community engagement piece. Cause we, you know, we talked about that a little bit at our retreat, but I wanna finalize what we're gonna do with that. And then we would bring it back and...
Where, is that already in here?
Um, so this was, last year, we, we took the eight goals, and remember, we had the boxes and the Survey Monkey? But we talked about how this time, the goals themselves, I mean, they're great goals. I mean, I don't, I don't think that that's the best way to engage input. So we talked about maybe instead asking for input on the actions. And so I guess I just wanted to make sure what we were gonna do, and I know Judy's already kinda teed it up, but we can then use that Facebook group and the Survey Monkey again, and put out the boxes. So, I don't know, so any thoughts about, I mean, do we just take the actions associated with the goals and get feedback on that, or what do you guys think?
Well, I certainly don't think we should just do the goals, because they're, they're so broad, and it really doesn't, without the actions, you don't really know what the goals mean. So, you know, for folks to be able to comprehend, you know, what we're asking about or what we're proposing, I think they do, it does need to be the actions tied to the goal, as a frame of reference. You know, so I would certainly just support moving forward, whatever the communication plan and mechanisms are. You know, but if we wanna give feedback from the citizens, it ought to be, you know, here's an overarching goal, and these are the actual, real-life things that we anticipate accomplishing as part or to, to reach that goal.
Right.
I think putting the actions on the forms that people are gonna fill out and drop in the boxes is gonna be difficult, because last year it was crowded with just the goals on there.
Right, yeah, that's, you know, it's easy enough to do on, via Survey Monkey or Facebook. Yeah, I'm not sure how we do the boxes either.
Unless you, unless you print them, instead of making it a quarter of a sheet, make it a half a sheet, front and back, you might be able to get the goals, the actions in then. We just have to use more paper, but we did get quite a few responses though.
We did, yep.
I mean, I, I, I'm not sure how valuable that would be. I mean, I'm just thinking about, what are the things that people are concerned about? Well, we're hearing a lot about the police. And yet, if we look at that goal, which is seven, everything really about the police is under future ongoing activities, as opposed to what's in line for doing now, and I think it should probably be flipped. And I'm, I'm just wondering if we could do something simpler, saying, these are the main things that we're focusing on, do you have feedback on it? Because if, otherwise, if we put on all this, like, 50 things, or however many it is...
Yep, it's a lot.
I just don't think we're gonna...
And we did say, you know, as far as the goal, that we just use one, you know, word or phrase to summarize that.
I think part of the concern ought to be, what is it that we're looking for? I mean, quite honestly, if I were an average citizen and you presented me with the goals, I'd say, yeah. What, I mean, there's, what could I disagree with? I mean, all of them are, you know, positive goals. I, just looking at the goals, you know, I would certainly be in, in agreement with them, even though I don't know what I'm actually agreeing with. You know, I'm saying, I'm not saying you wouldn't understand it, you just wouldn't know what it means. You know, so the question is, we put out these nine goals, and what are we asking people to say about them?
Right.
Because I, I would, I could certainly see, yes, I'm in agreement.
Right.
Because it's hard to really differentiate what's really going on in those goals, because they are so overarching and positive.
Right.
So last year, I think we asked them to choose their, to either rank them or choose their top X number, four, or something like that.
Yeah, we did have a prioritization.
What you could do is put just a couple key words, like affordable community, and then evaluate utility rates, designated CEIC, you know, and have them rank, you know, the actions under each goal, one, two, three. I think you could get that on the half sheet, front and back.
And then where will that get us?
Will we not do anything as a result that's on this sheet?
I mean, if, if something says, oh, we don't think this is important, are we gonna, we don't think it, continuous infrastructure development, dig once is important, are we gonna not do it? I, I mean, I, I, I guess I could see something that was more sort of a narrative, a one-page thing. These are the kind of things we're working on, and I, and give feedback, not ranking things.
Well, I mean, two things we talked about, you know, one goal is educate, right? And the environmental commission talked a lot about that in the report, we can always do a better job there. And I do like the idea of having some room for feedback, you know, tactics and actions that we're not thinking about, that we might wanna think about.
What are we missing?
So, and I like the idea of simplifying it as well, cause, you know, we'll, we'll have access to the full documents on the website, it's in other places, and we can have physical copies where the boxes are, if people wanna see the whole document. Okay, so is that the route we wanna take then?
Yes, and, you know, in light of the conversation tonight, and the intention to launch a PD organizational assessment, I kinda feel like the 2019 actions can be tuned up and made more concise. I mean, a lot of these things would come out of an assessment, but the assessment, you know, it's, it's part of it, if you will. So I, I don't know if it's a goal to just have it be less wordy.
Did you say you don't know?
Well, it should be a goal, I guess, to have it be less wordy, but it depends. I mean, the, the extra words do give clarity for us, because we know, we've had these conversations, and we talked about things at the retreat, and, but I'm not sure if that makes it, maybe it makes it less clear. and we talked about things at the retreat and, but I'm not sure if that makes it, maybe it makes it less clear for the community members, because you're not as down in the weeds as we are. So, then the question is, who's the consumer of this document? Is the consumer of this document us, in which it's kind of our work plan and it can be written in our language? Or is our goal to have a document that's very clean and concise and we can say, you know, it's an elevator speech? I'm, when I talk to people, I say, I'm focusing on utilities, budget, and policing. Like that, that's concise, you know? And, so, I mean, maybe it's two different documents. I, I don't know. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm muddying the waters, but I don't know who the audience is.
Yeah, so, I think what Lisa, what I hear you saying is sort of, sort of what I thought I heard Patty say, which was, you know, here's the short synopsis of things, and if you want, you know, this big glossary of terms or this, you know, expansive list of the actions in detail, you have that. So, someone's not having to check a nine-page document, maybe just a three-page document. And another thing I think we ought to be careful of is, in that we value the feedback we received last year and some of the items that we focused on as a result of our deliberations and citizen feedback, where some of those things are meant to be multi-year tasks, they don't lose momentum. Because they're ongoing efforts and even though maybe what folks are thinking might be a change in direction, you know, we can't like stop, you know, dig once, you know, halfway through, or anything of that nature. So, so, we started something last year and those things must reach their natural conclusion.
Right.
Along with acknowledging what this year's new appreciation for efforts might be.
Can I, can I comment on something that Lisa said, actually something Kevin said too, that really struck me? Is that this, citizens are involved in differing layers. And one layer are, are the folks on boards and commissions, for whom this is a really useful tool.
Yeah.
And it really gives direction. Oh, this is, this is our job, we, we have these projects that we're supposed to engage in. That's significant to me, and this document, I think, works on that level. But I like Lisa's notion of another document, which is more geared towards someone who may not be involved in a board or commission, but takes an interest and has a particular thing that they like to focus on, that's just readily accessible. Oh, I see that this council person does these things in this way, and I should talk to that person if I'm upset about this thing or I want to get involved. I like that idea. I'd be happy to help with that.
Great. I was just going to suggest that.
Well, and so, related to this, if we are going to, you know, have this streamlined document, then I would encourage all council members to look at the goals that you're focused on, pull out those things, right, and, and then Judy and we'll work together to compile this. I like that, I like that as well, and, you know, I could see it being like, you know, affordability. Here are the key things we're doing this year. What else could we be doing? Right? So, it could be something like that. So, if we all participate in that and feed those comments to Judy by the end of the week, then on Friday, we can make this go live. So, I'll get the Facebook and-
Let's go over who's going to be doing what.
Okay.
Excuse me, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could everybody move the microphones a little closer to your mouth? We're getting a few complaints that the folks at home can't hear us again, and we're trying to figure out why, so, thank you.
Is your mic on, Brian?
I don't think it is. Yeah, come up to the mic.
I'm told, I know that this cannot be a back and forth. But is there any, any time that we as citizens can discuss this with council, rather than we sit here or we stand here and we speak to faces that really give us no answers, no feedback? When can we have open discussions with you?
Are you talking specifically about the police or in general?
Well, actually, in general, right now, it involves that.
Right.
But, you know-
I mean, I think-
Any, anything that comes up, anything, any, when we stand here, we're not allowed to ask you questions. You can't answer us.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I will say, first of all, we're all accessible.
But as a group, you know, a public forum-
I think that is an excellent point. You know, at one point, there were times when we would do what was called work sessions, where it was more discussing.
Thank you.
In, in regard, and maybe that's really what we should be do, could do with the goals, you know? We could have a community meeting and we could have, we could do the goals that way. In regard to the police thing, I would imagine that as we start working on how we're going to do the police, that there will be some community engagement process, but we've just put that on the table.
Yeah, we do have work sessions all the time. I, I would point out that they're usually not very well-attended. And our meetings about the goals were publicly announced and open. So, I, I mean, I think it's great to have those discussions. Unfortunately, you know, this kind of formal meeting doesn't lend itself to it, but, I mean, there are those opportunities.
But if we know then that, okay, this is a meeting where you can, you can sit and discuss with council, within reason-
Sure.
Yeah.
What you're concerned about.
And we have done that, we, and we actually have done that most recently with the police, like when we were going to decide whether or not to get off the drug task force. Well, it wasn't actually that recently, it was about four or five years ago. It was a community meeting, people could talk, there's back and forth, so.
Okay.
Right.
That, that's my concern, you know, that's how I feel, you know.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, but the other thing is, you know, all, our numbers and emails are all available and we set up meetings all the time. I mean-
It's different. I, I appreciate what you were saying and, and I get, I mean, and it's odd, actually, to sit up here and have someone talk and not be able to. And at the same time, this is a session where we regularly are now going until ten o'clock, so-
I understand.
And we started at six, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I do understand, but that was my comment. So, I would appreciate, you know, if that happens.
All right. Thank you.
So, back to our goal thing.
Mm-hmm.
So, who would be number one?
I have some on one, because of the DCIC and utility.
I think there are going to be multiple.
Okay, well, there's the housing, but the housing really falls into, I mean, I can write-
I can take the first one.
I'll do the stuff about the housing stuff.
I mean, if this, if we're, like, I, I don't see any one person have so, having sole responsibility for a-
Yeah, but we need to assign work or else it's not going to get done.
To edit the document.
Okay.
You know, because I, I mean, I, I'm not leading all of these things, but I'm certainly touching them all enough to net down the language.
Well, that's, I mean, I guess that's why I think it, it's somewhat artificial to divide these out. Like active transportation, yeah, that one's pretty discreet, I can take that. But some of these cross over.
Yeah.
That's why, I mean, if we all look at the parts that relate to us and feed back those, like, key bullets to Judy, we could start putting that together.
Yeah, let's see what it looks like. I mean, because if we each write, you know, I'm Lisa and these are the things I'm focused on, it creates, and everyone does that, we get a really, maybe an interesting depiction of our focus areas, of the things that are actively being worked on and the intersections.
Well, and I actually, when I had thought about it, wasn't going from that end, but from the other end, which was, if you described, if you described the goal and then very briefly or in a targeted way, what, what the actions generally are, but then if it's more than one council person, it's more than one council person, because you have varied actions. And I don't think that's confusing or not streamlined. I think that's a, a good way to define it. Where I was seeing that more, just tightening it up for someone who's not as closely involved, like a member of a commission was, to, to make that goal a little easier to look at and comprehend. Oh, they want to do this stuff, or they want to do it in these ways, and here's who's working on that stuff. Just a little, just more simplified, basically, sort of the Reader's Digest version of this thing. And it, and then it wouldn't necessarily be in this form either, but more this bullet point, this bullet point. Because this is, to me, this is difficult to look at, more difficult than reading a, a more linear, let me talk about this goal, what we're doing around it and who's involved in it. That's more narrative, you know? That's just me, but, but that's kind of, I had thought of it as not limiting it to any one council person or particular goal.
Could you take leadership in this?
Yeah, why don't I throw something together and then you, it'll just be buffet line and then you pick out what you want.
Okay.
We'll just go from there. Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, so then we will target Friday to get something online. And Patty, are you able to help with boxes again?
Sure.
Thanks.
Can you be a bit more enthusiastic?
Well, and is someone, are you going to work on the Survey Monkey piece again this?
Yeah, I'll do the Survey Monkey and the Facebook thing.
So, but, but you're going to give me the papers that need to be copied and go with the boxes, right? You did last year.
Yeah, so hopefully by Friday, we'll have something that Judy and I can put together.
Okay, so, if I could, so Linda Fisher, if you're still watching the meeting and you still are having trouble hearing, could you email me again, please? Thank you.
Okay. All right, so next is the village investment policy, and I think that's a quickie. Lisa, do you want to?
Sure. We're looking at the village, Yello Springs Investment Policy. Unfortunately, there's no footer, so I don't know the, like, the date of the policy.
It was actually passed by council just maybe two years ago tops.
Okay.
Probably right before you came on, Lisa.
Okay, so, you'll see, beginning on page two and three, there's two recommended, recommended changes to the investment policy. The first has to do with the governing body in the, I guess, before I jump in, I really have to say that we very much uphold these general objectives of investment activities that are safety, liquidity, and return of our investments in that order. So, although we have been moving to invest more, we're always, our foremost objective is the safety of our investments. And I think this change in governing body supports that, because the way that it's been worded now, the authority to manage the investment program is granted to the treasurer, and the treasurer is a role that's identified in our charter. And what we're recommending is that instead, the authority to manage is by the investment committee. And we've had a group in place now for six or eight months, focusing on finance and investment. The treasurer is on that committee when we're talking about investments. But it's not just that one individual, so this creates a more robust governing body for the policy. Then the other just says a little bit more about who's on that committee. In the investment committee, it says that this, decisions are made jointly with the director, the village manager, and the treasurer. And we believe that it's the responsibility of council members to be very directly involved in investment decisions of the, of the village, and for us never to take a hands-off approach when it comes down to our taxpayer dollars. So, as a result, we're recommending a change to include at least one council member on this committee. Right now, there's two of us, Brian House and I, but we, we want council to all be actively involved in these decisions. So, those are the only changes.
Okay. So, and moving forward, one of the recommendations Rachel had, our former treasurer, is to come up with a more defined investment policy, which is something in the works. But I think the, what we're looking at right now is just, you know, this investment committee in particular, having a council member or two. So, I guess, any questions or comments about this? I think Lisa framed it very well. So, I guess we should have a motion to approve the change.
Do we need to bring back, yeah, we need to bring back a revised policy? And I just was going to ask if you wanted that on the next agenda.
So, we can't just use, I mean, we can't just use this one?
I think we passed it as a resolution last time.
Did we? Okay. All right, then let's put it on for next time.
And then it should be dated.
Well, it'll be dated if it's a resolution. Whatever your write-up was, it just wasn't in there, so.
All right, so let's put it on for next time then. Okay. So, we have one other item under new business, which is the candidate vetting process. And Canetta, I think you're going to be leading that one off?
Yeah. So, currently, we are working on a weighted rubric for the first pass for the village manager, manager candidates. So, with that coming up soon, February fifteenth is the deadline for the applications. We're going to have that prepared for the first citizen committee, so that we can have that committee review the vetting process before we actually get started on those resumes. And so, with that rubric, we're really looking at, like I mentioned, it was weighted. So, we're looking at the top priorities for that village manager candidate. And so, it will have a, pretty much a zero to three scale from what we're looking at right now. But we don't currently have it all the way done yet, so I do know that it'll be ready next time we convene.
For next council meeting?
Yeah. Well, it'll be ready before then, because we'll already have the committee looking at it too.
So, is that, that would be the process, then the committee would review it and then it would come to council?
Yeah, that way we can have that capacity built in.
Okay.
You mean, the committee will review the vetting process and then the vetting process will come to council for approval?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right. That works for me.
How's it going as far as candidates coming in?
They are coming in. Some of them are coming in looking very interesting and appropriate, and some of them are not so much, so it's a mixed bag. But we absolutely have, I mean, I do think that there's a definite pool of folks to be seriously considered, even at this point. And we're, we're getting, the number's kind of increasing daily as the, as we get closer to the deadline, so.
Right, and that deadline is February fifteenth.
Please share the link with your networks. It's really important. We're counting on the community to help us to identify the most fabulous pool of recruits. So, please share the link out.
And, yeah, and that, that's probably a good reminder to update it on the website, homepage, because, you know, as things get on there, they fall down.
Yep.
And then also, put it out on Facebook again.
Yep.
I know that we are doing the LinkedIn and that's generating some applicants as well. Okay. All right, so then, we were going to talk a little bit about the community engagement process, Mary Ann?
Yes, and Canetta and I, we talked about this briefly. So, my suggestion is that we utilize this commission that we have formed. And I was going to suggest that I would go to the commission meeting and facilitate a discussion and get the commission to develop what they think is a good process. And then have them be actively participating in the engagement process.
Okay.
Knowing that we can utilize, if we need to, I'm assuming maybe HRC and the mediation program, if there are roles for either of those groups.
Yeah, well, we did have mediator, mediation program was involved in the final visit and, and helping to facilitate that, so. And Jalen- And Jalen Rowe definitely mentioned that she was interested again, if we would like her to help.
I'm working with Jalen on something else, so.
And Mary Ann, I can speak to, you know, the different meetings and things that I had, if that document doesn't exist, of who went where when.
Oh, it does exist, yeah, 'cause we pulled all that stuff out, so. And I think actually you and Kevin both had all those documents like months ago, like, but Judy's got it all, so.
Let's just see, believe it or not.
'Cause we dug out everything, there's like, there's a stack of stuff. And so that was one thing I was gonna ask, is would you be with the citizen committee? Would you be using, like, showing them what we did before and facilitating the discussion that way, or just?
Yeah, I think we should talk about what we did before.
Okay. All right, so I guess, Judy, you, you have all the stuff that I forwarded you six months ago or whatever, right? So maybe just kind of pulling out what looks relevant to make sure that Mary Ann and Canetta, have you seen all that stuff?
I don't think I have.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll propose when we start working with the committee to do that, after I look at the timeline again.
Okay. Yeah, and actually, I did update the timeline, but I guess it didn't make it into the-
No, it did. I mean, there's just stuff that you, it doesn't go to council, but it, so I put what did go to council.
We were, I don't see-
On the timeline. Oh, on the timeline. Or on the agenda. Timeline, I added the, I added.
Right, 'cause I changed it to the, the April date and everything.
Page 141 in the packet.
Over here.
Is it not linked to the agenda?
Oh, on the, should be.
Okay, 'cause I, I just went off of the agenda to get the-
That may have just been one we missed.
Okay, all right, so I just-
It's in the packet, but you're right, yeah, it's not linked somehow, and I did not catch that.
All right. Yeah, so I, I was using our new technology to, yeah. So, I mean, but I, I know, because I created that document, so I, as long as everybody else saw it. But I did, in the timeline, move the visit to April like we talked about, and so. All right. Okay, so Judy, if you feel like you don't have any of the documents from the last search, okay, good.
I do, I'll just, you know, inundate everybody, and then you can pick what you want, because there is a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff. Okay, so I guess that's all in process, and let's talk briefly about charter review. Okay, so I asked Judy just to put in the full document from what happened with charter review last time, so that everybody could see what the process was. And also, it's a good opportunity to see our full charter, all right? And I think that from our retreat, we basically talked about a few particular items that we might want to identify, and probably not having a full-blown charter committee review process. You know, just as a reminder, any recommendations for charter changes have to go on the ballot, so I think the first step in this is having a more in-depth discussion about what, if anything, we would want to put on the ballot, right? So what, what kinds of changes are really important? And, I mean, we could also decide not to do anything. Yes. So I guess offhand, Lisa, you're kind of looking, are-
I have my notes, yeah.
Okay.
So there were three, and I think maybe one based on a finance committee meeting we're already talking about taking out. One was to leave in or take out the treasurer position. And I think at this point, we're thinking we'll leave in the treasurer position, so that's not a change.
Right.
The second one was the mayor's term. And I know there were mixed perspectives on that. And the third one that I have noted is vote 16.
Yes. And then do you wanna just, since you brought it up, elaborate on the mayor's term?
Well, I, I think I was originally brought it up saying that I think two years is too short of a term, because, I mean, speaking for myself as a councilperson who was elected to a two-year term, it's like there's so much to learn and to really get your feet under yourself, and the mayor is a very important role. And when I think of what Mayor Canine has been doing in terms of refining the processes in mayor's court, to, to have two years and then have turnover again seems like it could be disruptive. But at the retreat, I, I did hear some discussion, and this is absolutely not directed in any way at all to Mayor Canine, but that maybe originally that term was in the charter so that if you have a mayor that the community doesn't like, you're not stuck with them for a long time, just like you're not stuck with a councilperson that you might not like for more than two years. So that's what I recall was the discussion.
So, and then vote 16, for folks that haven't tuned in before, this is an initiative to do just that, to make our age for participating in local elections 16. Several municipalities have done it in Maryland, and there are even some states that are looking at this as a, like, statewide initiative, which could actually mean that 16-year-olds could vote for, you know, state representatives and state senators. And it does seem that it's something that resonates with a lot of people. This was part of our strategy document, to try to figure out what we could do locally to address gun control. And by giving our youth more ability to vote and be engaged in the process, that's one of the ways that they can help make things change. So it sounds to me like we have a couple items that we need to think a little bit more about, and then make a decision if we want to put something on the ballot or not. So, did anyone have any other items that they either saw from the charter review or anything else that we might potentially look at?
Yeah, there is actually a little legal one that I can bring if you decide to bring other things. It has to do with whether, what the quorum is in a planning commission decision as opposed to a BZA decision. It's different in the charter than it is in the planning and zoning code, so we can make that consistent. It is, right now, charter trumps planning and zoning code, so that can continue to be that way. It's not creating an impediment, but it makes it more consistent if they're consistent.
Okay. All right, so then you'll clarify what that issue is in a future meeting? Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Do you wanna put revisiting that back on?
Yeah, I mean, I think this was just to kind of follow up from our retreat. So then I think we need to, in March, make a decision if we're gonna move forward with any of these things, so.
Perhaps we could get some input from Mayor Canine about the mayor term. She would be the best positioned.
Okay.
And on the vote 16, I mean, would not a lot of that be driven through the county board of elections and so, where they have to rejigger something? No?
So they would make our, that would mean we would have, I mean, we'd have special rules, I mean, just like any jurisdiction can have.
Okay.
So, we've gotta do a little bit more investigation on that. But, you know, the preliminary research suggests that because Ohio is a home rule state like Maryland, that this is a possibility. So, all right, I'll focus on vote 16. Lisa, do you wanna talk to Mayor Canine about the term, or were you thinking about?
Sure.
Okay. And then Judy's gonna be responsible for the planning commission thing.
And on the treasurer, wasn't it that the, the language was not, it didn't say shall, so we don't have to change it?
It leaves latitude as to who fills that position.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, even without it being in our charter, 'cause one of the recommendations was the whole clerk treasurer, that is, we can do that legally. It doesn't have to be in our charter.
Okay.
So, okay, good. So we'll, we will probably bring that back on the second, maybe, well, maybe the first meeting in March.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I was just gonna throw out, Mary Ann, did you have a nomination you wanted to throw into new business?
Oh, thank you, thank you, yes. Mark E. Walt had been on the energy board. He'd been approved for the energy board, and then the energy board went in hiatus. He is interested in being on the environmental commission and has come to a meeting and said he's interested, and he submitted a letter of interest. And I talked to Canetta, who's the alternate, if she needed to meet with him, because I have already met with him, and Canetta felt comfortable with the fact that he's already been approved for a commission. Therefore, we would like to nominate Mark to the environmental commission.
Okay.
Second on your seconding there?
Second, yeah.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sure there are no opposed. All right.
And we do have another person who's expressed interest. We have to set up an interview with her.
All right, great. Managers' report.
Okay, I am gonna go over a couple of things. In the packet, you see some draft legislation in regard to the car chargers. As I noted in my last report, this is getting to be a continuing problem where local citizens just plug their, their personal vehicles in there and charge them overnight, and that's not the intent of the car chargers. The chargers are for folks who are at the Bryan Center for an event or in town happen to have an electric car, an electric car, so that they can charge it. The village does pay for this. This is a free service that the village provides, and it's, it's not meant to be for people to charge their personal vehicles overnight. Right now, we do have signs up that say four hour maximum and no overnight charging. That is, they're just being completely ignored. And the staff would like to amend the parking ordinance to include the car chargers there at the Bryan Center. It's noted in red on your, on your sample there. That way, we can do a little grace period with some warnings that say, hey, this is enforceable now, and if they continue to do it, then we can cite them to mayor's court, because right now, the officers cannot cite them to mayor's court.
Sounds good.
Yep.
All right, so you're gonna bring that to the next?
I will bring that to the next, to the next meeting. The, and it is part of the codified, so it will be in ordinance, I believe, right?
Yep.
And so then again, the utility roundup, we did have two residents take advantage of the utility roundup, the maximum assistance of $200 each. That was able to keep them connected, which, so, success. Applications are due by the 20th of each month, so if you feel like you're gonna need assistance, if you get a shut-off notice, please come in, please, and fill out an application. We would love to be able to help you with that. And then the Green County grant, staff would like to request that council consider using the Green County grant to complete the portion of sidewalk there between Fair Acres and Stafford that the village committed to completing as part of the Safe Routes to School project from last year. We're gonna go ahead and do the engineering on that, but the grant would just about pay for the sidewalk.
How much is the engineering?
The engineering is $4,000, I think. And then the, the just rough estimate that we have on the sidewalk right now is like $23,000 and something, and then the grant is $22,000.
Yeah, $22,064, all right. So I'm gonna suggest that we do not use the Green County grant for that, because of what I highlighted about the return on investment piece. So even though they did say we could use it for infrastructure, part of making the case for us to get more of a share, because they're talking about doing this annually, I think is to show that we did something really good in terms of return on investment. So I guess, I know we've got $10,000 set aside for the active transportation plan in the budget, and $50,000 for sidewalks. So I guess, I, yeah, I, I'd like us to wait on the Green County grant and try to think about that return on investment thing.
Okay.
But I do love that we're finishing this project.
Well, we did commit to it.
What do you mean, return on investment?
Meaning that if we spend that $22,064 in a way that generates revenue beyond just, you know, adding a block of sidewalk, then that was the big thing that the county commissioners emphasized about using those funds. So then, for example, if we applied that to the paid parking strategy, which has been brought up, all right? The return on investment for that would be pretty significant, and then we could go next year and say, look what we did with that $22,000, right? We turned that into a lot more money to support infrastructure in Yellow Springs.
So about the sidewalk area that you're talking about, and what, what is that area?
It, it's just, there, there is a section of, where the Safe Routes to School project started last year, there's a crosswalk coming over from Fair Acres that goes onto the south side of Fairfield, Yellow Springs, comes down Fairfield, Yellow Springs to Winter and down Winter to meet the sidewalk at Pleasant. We committed to completing the piece between where the sidewalk is at Fair Acres down to Stafford Street. ODOT did not want to include it in the project because there are some drainage issues there, and it has to be completely engineered. So they did not want to include it, and because ODOT basically ponied up the money for the entire rest of the project, the village committed to completing that piece.
Is this on, on Fairfield or Stafford?
It's on Fairfield.
Fairfield, okay.
So it's just taking it that half a block up to Stafford?
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah. And so then we've got like a, a nice circuit.
So would that rise to the top as one of the, one of the sidewalk areas that we'd put the $50,000 to? Do you know, or?
Well, it, it will have to be. I mean, because it's something we committed to doing, and ODOT wants us to hold our commitment, so, yeah.
Probably not gonna do it in the next month or so, about, probably.
Oh, we'll do it when the weather breaks, 'cause we're getting the engineering done now.
So, I mean, I'm saying that because that would give time maybe to bring this other project, if that's what you were considering.
Right. I mean, I was also thinking, if we do move forward with that cell tower, that, that, I mean, there's another $140,000 of that 280 that I'd like to do, some community improvement projects, so, so I think we should think about that as well, as a possibility. Cool, anything else? All right. Judy?
All right. I see that Bryant has enacted the new technology, and aside from the little snafu of the lack of timeline, I'm pretty darn excited. You can actually find things now. Before, it was like one of those games that you pay for, that you have to find the stuff in the house, then you realize you have to pay extra to actually find the stuff in the house, and you can't really find anything in the house. And that's how it was working on our website. You couldn't find anything in the house. You should be able to find anything in the house now, as long as it's only back six months. If we want it to go back many years, we can pay for that. We can have it go back as long as we want. We can have it go back to 1,900, and you can find it. And all you need to put in is a couple of words, or you can be super-specific and find exactly what you want. I messed around trying it on a bunch of different levels, and it is fantastically great. So that's just my plug.
Fantastically great?
Really happy that you can actually now find the stuff you're looking for on our, on our webpage.
So Judy, one question I had, so I've been playing around with it, and I'm excited as well.
Not as excited as I am, how hard it is to talk to your voice.
Not as excited as you, yes. So, but can you also, it seems like most of the searches are attached to agendas and things. Is there a way to just kind of pull up individual documents? So for example, I typed in 2019 village goals, hoping that I would find that two-page or whatever.
And you won't, 'cause we didn't pay for that. It will find ordinances, resolutions, minutes, agendas, anything that, same with planning commission. All planning commissions- All of planning commissions, those, and all of councils, those. And if you wanted more, we'd have to, yeah. You couldn't do it or it would cost us a honk, honk, honk load of money. And, you know, the other, the other fix is to actually make eGov do what it says it will do, which is to allow for a word search. And they keep saying they're working on that, but they have not yet actually arrived at a solution so that, that it actually will word search the way that they say that it will. I mean, if, if our website worked in the way that they promised us it does, you could find those documents. So we've applied this lay, this overlay to the things that I can easily send as files and that they can plug into that system. But discreet documents, unless we link them to a resolution, then you can find them.
Okay. Yeah, well, let's try to figure out some kind of workaround. And alternatively, it could be like a webpage with key documents. You know, just things that people, you know, would want to pull up.
I hear where you're going. I think maybe I can work with Jordan Gray to figure out a workaround for the, for documents. Because we were looking at such a big picture before with literally everything being not findable. Now that we've moved those, that chunk until you can find it now, I think I can maybe work with Jordan on the other part.
See?
Yeah.
See now, there's some excitement out here.
Oh, you just did the link? Is that off of the agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's great because, yeah, like Judy said, you can now find the places on the agenda where you want to read up and not go through 140 pages, so. Well, thank you, Judy. I appreciate the work on that. Definitely will help people to participate more and be more engaged.
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe that that is our last item. And now for any future agenda items. So one thing that I'm thinking more about, and since, Mary Ann, I, I agree with you about Nancy's comment about a work session. Maybe we can try to, we haven't done them as regularly as we did in the past. I always liked the work session idea with the caveat that a lot of times people don't come, all right? But maybe, maybe they will. And maybe we could try to think about one that is kind of a wrap-up to the goals process. So if we could do our community engagement and then we kind of put out there that, hey, let's sit around the table and talk about these goals and some of the feedback that we got, answer questions, that sort of thing. I think that's a great thing to do. And I don't mean to sound like I'm poo-pooing it or anything, or I didn't mean to sound that way, but I just want us to be realistic about why sometimes we don't put efforts in community conversations and things because a lot of times, we don't get a lot of engagement. So, but let's try.
Well, now, just in fairness, we did not plan our goal-setting work session for people to come to, truly. We didn't plan it, hey, 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 come to our goal-setting workshop. We're going to have it during the day, so if you were.
But we have, we have in the past, though. So we have tried to do that, so. But yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's a great idea. And even if, even if my voice is not sounding excited, I really do think it's a great idea.
So would the pitch be higher? That means you're more excited. So let me, let me ask something. Does it make sense to, similar to going in and out of executive session, would it make sense to maybe sometimes move from formal meeting, you know, into a, okay, I'm getting no. So I won't go on.
Well, what I was going to say was, what you've done in the past with work sessions that you kind of moved that way because a strict work session and a strict regular session were, you created a hybrid, or the last council kind of created a hybrid. So the first part of the meeting, you just rocked through the petitions and the communications and the, and the legislation, which you have to get out of the way. You had to get some business done quick. And then it became a work session on, for example, you had said, let's highlight, you know, transient guest lodging. So that topic became the work session topic. And then after that sort of regular session chunk of work was done and no, we're, we're keeping comments limited, we're, we're getting the business done. Now we're opening it up and we're sitting around a table and engaging and, and that happened. And that worked, I thought, very well because what happened when it wasn't hybrid was that we got so far behind on the business items that it was crushing. And we literally had to move away from having work sessions.
Unless we did it like on the fifth Monday of the month or something, you know, had a special.
It is your regular meeting.
No, no, I mean, we could have a extra meeting. That would be one option. That's just a work session, you know.
That's, well, that's, I mean, that's possible, but I, I also think it almost misses the point, which is that citizens are saying, when we come to your meetings, we're not allowed to engage. So instead of saying, we'll have a special one and you can, and it will be a special time that's different from any other time, well, man, I was all ready to go to your regular meetings because that's when I wanted to engage. I mean, some people work well with that, some people don't. But I think what I liked about the work sessions being, when the regular meetings happened was it costs way less for a babysitter, A, just personal. But B, that it was, you've already carved out this time. We're listening to you, this, we're going to engage with you during this meeting. I mean, that, and that seemed genuine to me as opposed to, well, not genuine, but the, the other sessions that were completely outside of that were seriously huge, community-wide issues where we were filling up a gym with people.
And A and B, we've done that.
Yeah, well, I think, so my recommendation would be we make it an agenda item and we talk a little bit more about how we want to do that.
Council brethren, I have a problem.
Yes.
I did not realize that February 18th was a holiday and I have business travel on February 19th. I am not going to be able to be at that meeting. And a bunch of it is my stuff.
Wow.
And I am really sorry because I pledged to never miss a meeting. Can we just skip President's Day?
Yes, you may, but.
I have no problem working. It's not a big deal to me. I, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with it. It's.
I mean, can we meet on Monday? I'm already working that day.
If it was Martin Luther King Day, I'd have a problem. But President's Day, you.
I mean, are we, by a meeting, I mean, we can honor some presidents. I mean, can we meet on Monday?
It's okay with me.
Um, I'm not opposed to it. Usually, you're very strict about when we publish our meeting dates, though, so, but.
But President's Day, I don't know. It's, I'm sorry to not.
Well, I mean, I, I just, I, I want to be at the meeting, but I can't if it's on the 19th.
I have to go to the dentist that day, so I may not be very communicative. And I, I, I would not want anything that required staff to be here because.
Because it's a holiday.
The double-time staff. Other than Judy.
Well, I mean, the, the other thing is Dr. Shaw, Brian is not available on the 18th. So the culture of health stuff could move to March 4th. I mean, the only other thing that I have is the reports. It's just I like to be here.
I'm thinking probably we'll come back with something about the police, don't we?
Right. I would, don't want to lose momentum.
The, the really true, and it's not that I'm dissing the President's Day thing, but I had to check three times. Is it, do we really get that off? Ruth Ann, are you sure we get that off? Is that a thing? And it, and it is a thing, but I think that a lot of people will also say, unless they're federal employees or they work in the school system, or like, wait, why aren't they meeting on Monday? I mean, it is one of those funky holidays, which is the reason I'm not too heartburned if you guys want to move it back and we'll just notice it, splash it everywhere. But it isn't one that people write on their calendar, President's Day, bake a cake, you know? So I'm willing to put the word out and I'm willing to show up if you want to move it.
I mean, I do not have a problem with it, so if that's, if everyone's in agreement, okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, other future agenda items.
Excuse me, can we just, Sean, is that a schedule problem for you?
Not going to be celebrating at home. So you had, bringing back the 2019-04 SBC lease agreement resolution. You have a resolution to revise the investment policy. You have a 2018-04 parking ordinance. And that's all, and the review of the vetting process. That's what I had.
Yep.
And the transient guest lodging.
Yes, down.
And then, and you said we're not doing the culture of health?
No, let's move that to the next one so that they, well, we have a choice. And I wrote you because I couldn't decide about this. So I think it'd be nice if they were both here together and that we had a nice amount of time to talk.
Right.
So in that case, we should go to the next one.
To the 4th? Okay, great.
And then we can maybe have an update on the police assessment.
And then Judy, if you could also update with the new timeline about our village manager search?
I thought.
Because we're not going to be announcing.
Oh, you, so you're moving everything up. Okay, my bad. I thought that you were just moving up the, the.
Because the visit's not happening till.
Because the visit's moving up.
Yeah, so I just make sure that it's aligned with the new one. Okay, anything else? All right. Wow, we actually finished before 9:30. All right, so if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
It's been real.
So maybe we can, agenda planning, maybe we could knock that out while you're sitting here?